Let's call this meeting of the Aurora City Council for March 11, 2025 to order. Madam Clerk, you please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Vade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sergeant Armstrong for this meeting?
So motion.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice fold. Mr. Muhammad.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Happy first meeting of March. Tonight's pledge of allegiance will be led by our state wrestling champions from Marmion Academy. Big round of applause for them. Followed, followed by the invocation by our Ward nine Alderman, who's also the Alderman of our state swimming champion who's here. Big round of applause for Chase Meyer. Alderman Buck. If all of our guests can please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Marmion Academy Wrestling Team, followed by the invocation of Alderman Buck.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we bow our heads. Father, we come before you this evening. We come to you humbly. We come to you asking for wisdom, insight, asking you to bless us as we serve the people and businesses of the city of Aurora. Give us insight, give us wisdom as we do your work in will. Bless all of these young people who have grown to heights of succeeding, to have their arms raised in victory. We understand that you are the true victor. Let us remember this in the name of your son. Amen. Amen. All right, Mayor's Office of Community Affairs, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We are always excited to honor our students. Today is March 11, 3-1-1. On 3-1-1 day, we honor our customer service professionals. And today, the city of Aurora is so excited to launch our new 3-1-1 platform, the My Aurora 3-1-1 platform, just state of the art, top notch in building community engagement and strengthening communication. So if we can give that team a big round of applause for all the months of work that they put in to make that happen. So thank you to the entire communications and marketing team and everyone who made that possible. But tonight, we are here because of the history that happened on Saturday, March 1st, where Aurora brought back several state championship titles. We brought back the state championship Class 3A for wrestling, and we brought back the state swimming championship for the 200 yard and the 500 yard. We're going to invite Mayor Irvin down as we honor first our state wrestling champions from Marmion as they clinched the first school title for wrestling in the school's history. Big round of applause for Marmion Academy. Their 42 and 31 win.
Come on, you can do better than that. Give it up for the Cadets!
There you go.
Give it up for the Cadets! All right.
That's it, most definitely. We're going to bring up the coaches first. You know, couldn't ever have a good team without great coaches. Head coach, come on down, Tony Sorenzioni. Big round of applause. They have a great team here. We also have several coaches, but a number who are here tonight, Nate Finson Raider. And Coach Jimmy Garcia. Big round of applause. And we have the photographer right down front there. We have 29 gentlemen all together in the wrestling team, 10 who are supporting members for the team, and 19 who went down and wrestled at state. We're going to honor the entire team because we know how important camaraderie and brotherhood is for the overall success of a program. And so we honor first those really strong members of the team who supported their fellow comrades as they went down and clinched the state championship. He's from freshman class at Marmion. Big round of applause for Lane Abbott. Come on down, Lane. We're going to take individual pictures here. Hold on, we need a trophy. All right, holding that right there. Thank you. And Lane, you can step up on the stage back there. All right, another round of applause for Lane Abbott. Also, class of 2028, freshman class, Michael Callaway. Mike's not here? Okay, Mike's not here. Sophomore Logan Conover. Nope, not here. Okay. Senior Max Goheen. There he is. Max. There we go. Another round of applause for Max Goheen. Junior Dominic Haddit. Not here? All right. Freshman Kyle Perry. Nope. Freshman Will Showalter. No, that's all right. Freshman Julian Skrneski. No. Freshman Daniel Skura. There he is. There he is. Another round of applause for Daniel Skura. And lastly, sophomore Carson Zeke. Oh, Carson, all right. Big round of applause for all of the young supporting cast members. And now we move on to the starting members of the team who went downstate and brought back home the championship. He is a sophomore, Ethan Bell. By the way, the mayor was a wrestler back in the day.
I wrestled 105, he's 106.
All right. Sophomore Luke Bozema. Bozema, here we go. All right, big round of applause for Luke. Junior Demetrius Carrera. Another round of applause for Demetrius. Junior Joey Favia. Another round of applause for Joey. Sophomore Grayson Garcia. All right, another round of applause for Grayson. State champion, junior Nicholas Garcia. Another round of applause for Nicholas, state champion. Senior Anthony Haddit. No, he's not here. That's all right. Senior Andrew Heritos. I asked it again. Junior Ashton Hobson. There he is. Another round of applause for Ashton Hobson. Sophomore Jonathan Comcio. And Jonathan, you can come, Jonathan, you can come right in front of the podium here. You can start standing down here in front of the podium. There we go. All right, next, sophomore Alex Corpin. All right, Alex, congratulations. Next, freshman Aiden McClure. Nope. All right, sophomore Preston Morrison. Big round of applause for Preston. Next, senior Matuz Nix. Big round of applause for the champ, Matuz. Next, we have junior Zag Stewart. Another round of applause for Zach, the champion. Next, we have junior Vicenzo Testa. Another round of applause for Vicenzo. Rounding out the final three, we have sophomore Colton Wyler. Big round of applause for Colton. Next, senior Jack Young. Big round of applause for Jack. And rounding out the state wrestling championship team, freshman Garrett Ziller. Big round of applause for all of our state champions. Before we hear from our coach, want to recognize and bring down, if we can, the president of Marmion is here, Anthony Tinnarella. Come on down, Anthony. Principal Joe Large and athletic director Joe Curry. Come on down. And now we're going to turn it over to Coach Tony. Come on down and share a bit about the team before the mayor does presentation. We can bring the microphone back here.
Sounds good. Hello, everyone. Thank you guys all for being here. Couple quick things about this team. Like most teams, these guys work really hard. They go 6:00 AM twice a week and they do runs. Just an idea, this varsity team had an average mile at the end of the year of five minutes and 50 seconds. Unbelievable work by these guys. Most of these guys practice year round, dedicating their life to this sport with the idea that the hard work they put into this and their academics can lead to getting into a phenomenal college, which a lot of our kids do get into. So they know that this is a vessel to get them to the best college they can get to and set their life up for the future. And a lot of these guys do a great job with that.
Yes.
As for this season, this season was a season where we were injured almost the majority of the season. We finally had our full lineup at, basically at regionals, which is the last month of the school year. And so we knew this team was going to be special. We knew that if we finally got healthy, we'd be able to go out there and really wrestle well. And that's what these guys did. In the state final match, I'd like to share this because it's, I've never seen this in my 25 years of coaching. There's 14 weight classes, and as coaches for must have been two to three hours in between the semifinal and the final, we're doing all the projections of what if we put our guy here, they put their guy here? We think we'll win by this, they might win by this. And so out of those 14 weight classes, three guys got the exact projection we had for them. Two guys who didn't get the projection, one was miscalled on an illegal slam, where the other kid who most of the time would probably get up, his coaches told him stay down because then it's basically a forfeit. And then the other match, there was a choke put on our kid, which cost that match. The other nine kids beat the projection. It was the most team effort competition I've ever witnessed. I've never seen everyone step up to the plate, outperform the projection, pick their teammates up when a couple of adverse moments happen, and I've never seen a team respond like that. These guys all did their jobs. They wrestle really hard, and it was a really special thing to see. And so I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Ah, Marmion Academy, state wrestling champions. We have a presentation for you from the mayor to the team.
You know, there's something that we like to say when we have champions in the house. The champs are here! Give a round of applause to Cadets! The champs are here! This is for Marmion Academy, 2025 IHSA Class 3A State Wrestling Champions. The champs are here!
Something else?
We want to give, you know, we can't just let this go. This is something special. So we want to post this, you know, as you come into the city of Aurora. So people know that the champs are here in the city of Aurora. Marmion Cadets Wrestling Team, 2025 IHSA State Champions. And every student's going to get one and make sure you know that the champs are here at Aurora. Marmion Cadets, give it up one more time for Marmion Cadets! Because Marmion's so close to my heart, my son went to Marmion. And me being a wrestler myself, matter of fact, my favorite move was the fireman's carry. I don't know if anyone still does that anymore. That's from, you know, like a long time ago. I won't say how many years. But, you know, I'm looking at these young men here, and I wrestled 105 back in the day, and I see some 106s and 120s. They would have made me, they would have kicked my butt, is what I'm saying. They got that wrestling stare. So it is my absolute honor to read this proclamation for Marmion Academy Wrestling Day, March 1st. Whereas Marmion Academy Cadets Wrestling Team has had a stellar 2024-2025 season. And whereas Marmion Academy Wrestling Team claimed this year the first dual-team state title in school history with the 42-31 win. And whereas the Marmion Academy brought home the gold to Aurora by clinching the 2025 IHSA Class 3A State Championship for Wrestling. So now, therefore I, Mayor Richard Irvin, do hereby proclaim the date of their historic state championship win, March 1st, as Marmion Academy Wrestling Team Day in the city of Aurora from this day forward!
Congratulations, gentlemen. And March 1st, Marmion Wrestling Day. Thank you so much. You may be seated. Round of applause as these champions take their seat. We're so proud of them. Thank you so much. But wait, there's more. Saturday, March 1st. Saturday, March 1st, historic day for sports in the state and definitely here in Aurora. As one of our own Aurora residents and students at Oswego East clinched not one, but two IHSA state swimming championships. Please join the mayor and welcome state champion Chase Meyer! Chase brought home the gold this year in the 200, winning 1 minute 35 seconds, .91. And in the 500, winning at 4 minutes 19 seconds, .36. The double state champion will matriculate to the United States Naval Academy, pursue a degree in engineering. Yes, yes, yes. One second. Pursue a degree in engineering, and he'll go from swimming in the water to serving his country on the water as part of the United States Navy. Another round of applause for Chase Meyer, double state champion! Big round of applause for the double state champion, Chase Meyer.
Um, so yeah, I had two state champions, but I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for my team and my coaches over there. So round of applause for them.
Yes.
We had a really good relay this year. Me, a junior, a sophomore, and a freshman. And I have confidence that next year, they're going to go out there and they're going to try and be even better. Um, yeah.
We have Chase at street side.
And again, when we have Chase, state champs, we got to let them know that we care. So this is for Chase Meyer, 2025 IHSA State Swimming Champ, 200 yard and 500 yard champion. This guy is serious. Let's give him a round of applause. Chase!
And as the mayor, before he reads the proclamation, we're going to invite down any coaches, fellow teammates. Come on down. Big round of applause.
Fellow teammates, come on down. Parents, come on down.
Alderman Buck, this is your ward. Come on down.
Parents, Alderman Buck, come on down. Let's show some love, this brother.
If you can stand next to the mayor, Chase?
This proclamation is for Chase Meyer Day, March 1st. Whereas Chase, an Aurora resident and senior at Oswego East High School, is a stalwart student, athlete who dominates in the pool and in the classroom. Let's give a round of applause for that. Wow! And Chase, the most decorated swimmer ever at Oswego East, made history when he clinched two 2025 IHSA state championships for swimming. One more round of applause for that! Chase brought home the gold this year in the 200, winning in, I'm going to let you, is that 1 minute 35 seconds?
Yep.
Oh my God! And the 500 in 4 minutes 19 seconds. And whereas the double state champion will matriculate to the United States Naval Academy, pursue a degree in engineering, and serve his country on the water in the U.S. Navy. Give him another round of applause for that! So now, therefore I, Mayor Richard Irvin, do hereby proclaim the day of his historic state championship double win, March 1st, as Chase Meyer Day in the city of Aurora from this point forward. One more round of applause for this very- One more round of applause for this very talented young man.
I've always had some really great swimmers, but by far, this was the one from the beginning of the season I knew would achieve greatness. He went through the entire state series of going through sectionals and going through prelims of just toying with his enemies and going out there and just doing well enough to win his events. And then he went into finals. And in finals, he just, he went out there and he had one goal in mind and he went after it from the beginning to the end. And I've never had a swimmer swim like that and this guy has been amazing to coach for the last four years, so I'm proud of him.
All right.
Our double state champion Chase Meyer. We're so proud of you. If we can leave Chase up and if we can bring your four guys back down to the front with the mayor with their awards, we're going to do a group shot with those four, the mayor to represent the wrestling team and Chase. Come on down. We'll bring the proclamation down, the trophies, and the street sign. A couple on each side of the mayor?
All right, here we go. Right up to me, ready? 1, 2, 3. Awesome. One more, 1, 2, 3. It's a great champion, guys.
Another round of applause for all the state champions. Congratulations, gentlemen. You make us proud. Thank you so much. That concludes my report, mayor. To all of our guests, the mayor will release everyone in just a minute.
You know, I want to thank our state champs for being here with us tonight and celebrating and allowing us to honor you for the great things that you have done to make Aurora proud because you make us proud. One more time, one more round of applause for our state champs. At this, I know most of you are here for the presentations and we appreciate you being here. We're about to start the regular part of the business of the city council, which isn't nearly as exciting as the presentations and giving the awards. So I'll give you guys a few minutes to file out. And then we've got some students here that probably have to get back and do some studying and get ready for school tomorrow. So I'll give you a few minutes to file out. If you want to stay, feel free, but I know some people have to go. You're welcome, brother. My daughter was in the Navy, man. So, yeah, brother. All right, the folks that were here for the presentation and weren't able to stay have exited the city council chambers. So let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, mayoral appointments. Madam Clerk, will you read the first item under mayoral appointments?
250137, a resolution appointing Brad Banks to the Sister Cities Commission.
Yeah, there's been a motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderman Smith. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Barrera?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. Madam Clerk, will you read the next item?
250157, a resolution approving the appointment of Gretchen Tim to the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Board.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or discussions on this item? There being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrera?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries, the resolution is approved. That concludes mayoral appointments. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let me take some photos with the folks that were just, do we have Brad Banks present with us in the Sister Cities? Come on up, Brad. I'm going to take a picture of you in the well. Let's give Brad a round of applause. Thank you for serving, brother. And do we have Gretchen Tim here with us today? Gretchen, thank you very much for serving. Hey, Gretchen. Give her a round of applause. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Madam, can you read the rules of public comment, please?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city councils shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Madam Clerk, will you call the first person wishing to offer public comment?
Adam Pauley.
Mr. Pauley, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I rise today in strong support of the MOU between our fair city and the Kane County Health Department on the naloxone vending today. I want to thank Deputy Mayor and Michelle Myers and her team. And Michelle Myers, she's awesome. We like Michelle. But I rise today in support of that. It's my understanding there may be a motion on the floor today to give it its own separate vote on unfinished, and that would be okay, as long as we get this passed today. I also want to thank you for the closure and clarity personally and otherwise that this will provide. This is important and people who come after us will remember the work that we did here today. I brought out white roses. White roses are symbols of hope. They are not only symbols of hope for those who have overcome addiction, but they are hope, at least for us policymakers, for those who, through our work, are allowing hope to continue to proliferate throughout our community. And by your actions here today, it most certainly will. And my hope is that this resolution will be the foundation for a strategic partnership between our health department and our city, the two organizations that are large enough to really carry things as it comes to mental health and addiction. Because we are responsible for the conditions. And as I said, I thank you in advance for your vote and for the clarity and closure. Not just, not just for the closure for our community, but for the closure on me personally. This will allow me, this vote today will allow me to turn the page on a less-than-bright chapter of my life. We're still going to be involved in this policy area, and I will be probably until I die, but this will, this will allow the closure, to allow me to turn the page and continue and to allow our community to do the same. And that is what we must do today, and that is what I ask you to do. Let us continue. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, call the next speaker. Ms. Bates, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mavis Bates. I live in Aurora and I am here tonight to talk to you about the referendum that's going to be on the ballot on April 1st. It's for Kane County's Public Safety Sales Tax Referendum. So the question on the ballot on April 1st will be, to pay for public safety purposes, shall the county of Kane be authorized to impose an increase on its share of local sales taxes by 0.75%? So what does this mean to us in dollars and cents? That means that on a $100 purchase, your tax, sales tax would increase by .75, by 75 cents. On $100, 75 cents. So some things are not going to be taxed in this sales tax referendum. First of all, groceries will not be taxed. Medicine will not be taxed and other medical prescription or otherwise and medical devices. And the other thing that won't be taxed are the big-ticket items, including cars and trucks. So the main things, if you're thinking of a family of four that might be on a limited budget, the main things that they need to live on, food, medicine, a car to get to work, those things will not be taxed. So the money generated by this tax will all go towards public safety. What is public safety? That includes a lot of things, especially in Kane County, where we pay 70, 71% of our fund, of our general fund goes towards public safety. It's the sheriff, the state's attorney's office, the coroner, the courts, the Office of Emergency Management, 911. So why are we doing this now? We're doing it because, why are we having the sales tax now? We're doing it because we know that our property owners are already paying their fair share. So we want this not to be a rise on the property taxes, but a sales tax instead. Sales taxes also are paid not just by our residents, but by people traveling through Kane County, people coming to the outlet mall, people coming to, actually, there's a great big Love's gas station up on 90. We don't know where that is. That's up by the North Pole, right? But that is, that is, that is one of our main taxing places in Kane County. So please vote yes. I've got 10 seconds. So this is important to us and for a stronger, safer Kane County. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Madam Clerk, please call the next speaker. Ms. Lewis, you have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Thank you. I know you, Mavis, is always fun. So I live at 900 South Fourth Street in the city of Aurora. Yeah, Aurora, I love it here. So safety, any of you that know me know that safety is super important to me. Six years ago, went through the tragedy at Henry Pratt Company, Aurora stood by us. Our sheriff's department here in Aurora, our APD stood by us, the coroner, our county people, everybody. Safety's important. I want to tell you something that happened today. So we were at a county board meeting and we got out and we found out that, while we were in that meeting, there was a fire up in Elgonquin, which Mavis doesn't know where that is, but I do. And what happened was this whole senior complex, 30 senior families were dislocated just like that. First people up there were our OEM group, part of public safety. They gathered around, they made sure, along with the Red Cross, that all 30 families were safe tonight in someplace warm, while we assess everything. Public safety is so important. That's why I live in Kane County. It's a great place to live and we take care of our own. But all of it comes with a cost. And that's why we need this referendum. Because we can't just say, we want to cut programs. We can't say, oh, who cares about the OEM? I do. We can't say we don't care about the county sheriff helping the city sheriff. No, I care about it. Can't say we don't care about mental health. I do. Obviously, Adam Pauley does. And it just goes on and on and on. And second thing, my mayor, his thing is S E E. Safety, economics, and education. We cannot have a good economic climate here unless we have the safety. People have to feel safe to move around Aurora, they have to feel safe to move around Kane County. And if we don't fund the safety and we don't put that as a priority, then the rest of it falls apart. So, thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, do you have any additional speakers?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. Next, we will hear both the consent agenda and the direct-to-council consent agenda in full. Would the clerk now please read both agendas in full?
240915, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to enter into an agreement with Upland Design Limited of Plainfield, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $160,000 to design renovations to Garfield Park. 250072, a resolution authorizing approval of the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Amendment, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and substantial amendment 2025 number one. 250141, an ordinance amending Section 2-185 of the Code of Ordinances with respect to the obligations of members of the city's boards and commissions. 250143, a resolution awarding the 2025 sanitary sewer CIPP lining to National Power Rotting Corporation in the amount of $894,315. 250147, a resolution authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city of Aurora and North Island Apartments to provide a loan in the amount of $400,000 in community development block grant funds for a roof replacement of affordable senior housing development building located at 2 North Stope Avenue. 250148, a resolution authorizing the execution of a modification to a redevelopment agreement between the city of Aurora and between the city of Aurora and Community Housing Advocacy and Development to modify loan terms for Project Home 2010-01. 25-0149, a resolution authorizing the execution of a modification to a redevelopment agreement between the city of Aurora and Community Housing Advocacy and Development, modify loan terms for Project Home 2011-01. 25-0150, a resolution authorizing the execution of a modification to a redevelopment agreement between the city of Aurora and Association for Individual Development to modify loan terms for Project Home 2012-01. 25-0151, a resolution authorizing the execution of a modification to a redevelopment agreement between the city of Aurora and Association for Individual Development to modify loan terms for Project Home 2023-02. 25-0152, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development, approving the Abbey Meadows Plan Description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R4A 2-family dwelling district and OS1 conservation, open space and drainage for the property located on the east side of Radent Road at Mesa Lane Extended. 25-0153, an ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to rezone approximately .01 acres of the property located on the east side of Radent Road at Mesa Lane Extended from R1C 1-family dwelling district with a conditional use to R1 1-family dwelling district to remove the property from the Marmion Academy Plan Description. 25-0154, a resolution approving a preliminary plan in plat for lots 1 through 51 of Abbey Meadows subdivision on vacant land located on the east side of Radent Road at Mesa Lane Extended. 25-0161, a resolution establishing the maximum number of licenses for tattoo and body art establishments in accordance with Chapter 25, Article 11 Tattoo and Body Art Establishments. 25-0162, a resolution to award the North Kingsway Drive and Kennelworth Place Water Main Replacement Project located in Ward 5 to Girardi Sewer and Water in the bid amount of $1,48,465.00. 25-0163, a resolution to award the Broadway Avenue Sewer Separation Project located in Ward 4 to Performance Construction and Engineering in the bid amount of $3,338,777. 25-0164, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to purchase a one-year renewal of a DocuSign Contract Lifecycle Management subscription from Karasoff Technology Corporation of Western Virginia for an amount not to exceed $94,720.80. 25-0165, an ordinance vacating a city easement on the property located at 4173 Ogden Avenue in DuPage County, Aurora. 25-0170, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Fox Valley Music Foundation for the calendar year of 2025. 25-0171, a resolution approving a service agreement between the city and the county of Kendall for the provision of demand response transportation through 2027. 25-0177, a resolution initiating a public hearing to consider the revisions to Aurora's comprehensive plan for obvious changes throughout the city of Aurora. 25-0187, a motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the city in workers' compensation claims. 22Q 051558960, 23Q 051562255, and 20Q 051559206. 25-0188, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement with the Kane County Health Department for an opioid overdose reversal agent vending machine at the Aurora Transit Center. 25-0166, a resolution accepting the dedication of an easement located at 4173 Ogden Avenue. 25-0192, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, February 25th, 2025 City Council Meeting. 25-0204, a resolution accepting the improvements and waiving the maintenance security for 500 Rathbone Avenue site work, 500 Rathbone Avenue.
Second. There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Before we consider that motion and second, are there any motions to remove any items from the consent agenda, or any questions on anything on either consent agenda? Alderman Lash.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just remove item 250188 from consent to unfinished?
All right, that item will be removed from unfinished. 25-0204, I'm sorry.
01.
01. 01 will be moved to unfinished. Is there any? 01.
0188.
All right. Is there any other item, any other questions or any other items, requests to be removed from either of the consent agendas? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on the both consent agendas, given the fact that we have a motion and a second on the floor, less the one that has been, thus the item that has been removed?
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The consent agenda and direct-to-council consent agenda are both approved, minus the item that will be removed from the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, let's go on to unfinished business. Can you read the first item under unfinished business?
25-0075, a resolution approving the 2025 Quality of Life Grants in the amount of $910,773. Move.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or discussion on this particular item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Alderman Barrero.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on these quality life grants. I know, I know it's difficult when you get a lot more applicants than you have money, and there's a very good process through community services, but I just wanted to express a concern with two of the awardees, and that has to do with the museums. So they're in a separate pool, they were in a separate pool, and now they're collapsed with other grant recipients or applicants. And so, you know, back in the day, they were getting $150,000, then it got cut to $75,000. Last year was $50,000, and this year they're getting, they got reduced again, and they're getting $35,000. And so I know that the city of Aurora is a great partner with these institutions. They provide, you know, space, they help with the repairs and maintenance and other things. But the issue is that the museums have limited opportunities for funding. It's hard to get funding if you're a museum. They, you know, for example, they don't qualify for the block grant portion of the grant program that we have. And also, they can't scale their program down, is when other program, when other applicants submit a program, they can just reduce the number of people that they're serving. Well, they can't really go any smaller. They have to operate the spaces that they have, and they're on a shoestring budget. They have a hard time. I know they were in a, you know, having hard times, and so this is only going to make it worse. So they, their role that they have in the city of Aurora is that they are the keeper of Aurora's history, whether it's, you know, from, you know, the Fire Museum, has a great story there, and the Aurora Historical Society has a lot of, a lot of stuff that I remember as a kid, just seeing all the history, rich history of the city of Aurora. So what I would like to say is that, you know, for the next grant cycle, I would like to see this reconsidered as to how the museums are treated in the funding pool.
Just to let the record reflect that Alderman Bug has left the city council chambers, I assume temporarily, and he will return momentarily, but has not been present for any of this discussion on this particular item. Are there any other discussions, questions based on Alderman Seville?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I too wanted to second what Alderman Barrero said. I brought this up at the committee meeting, and I too feel that the downtown museums have been a really an important piece of the puzzle for economic revitalization in our downtown, and I'm hoping too that in the next cycle that they can be considered for more funding. And Alderman Barrero is correct. I know especially the Aurora Historical Museum was receiving at one point in time $150,000 a year, and have been slowly whittling down. And I know they're competing with a lot of entities, but they're just such an important component, and they add so much more flavor and excitement to the First Fridays as well, because they're participating in open every time we have that event. So I just wish that as well, and urge more funding in the future if available. Thank you.
Any other question or discussion? Can I say that I absolutely agree with both of you gentlemen, that we should do, do much more to fund our museums that are part of the fabric of our city, especially in our downtown? And I think that's a great point that you make, that years ago, we used to fund these organizations at a much higher level. But as you remember, years ago, we got a whole lot more funding from our Riverboat Casino, where you know the funding that we give for the quality life, quality life grant comes from. And that money also goes to the aldermen for you to spend for your ward funds. So I know the aldermen are interested in the future and increasing, you know, the ward funds as we grow and become more successful, get more people, we need more money to address the needs of our community. But as our revenues, as the casino exists today, continues to decline, we have no choice but to reduce the amount that we pay, that we are able to grant to organizations like these very, very important museums in the city of Aurora. Matter of fact, back in the day, as Dan pointed out, we used to receive $15 million a year in gaming funds, our portion of the gaming taxes from the casino, 15 million. But with the addition of other licenses throughout the state and changes in what was allowed with gaming, it's reduced and declined year after year after year. Now it's under $5 million. So the same organizations that relied on this money, the alderman fund that relied on this money, that money is not there, which is exactly why this administration took the bold chance of, of working with Penn and Hollywood Casino to move the casino to the, near the Outlet Mall by the Expressway, so we have more access. Now, the casino wouldn't have done this unless they knew they would be able to make more money and have more revenues. The projection is they're going to be able to triple their current revenues to less than $5 million. So we get back up to that, that 15 million that we would get from gaming taxes per year. So we'll not only be able to give the aldermen and the alderman ward funds and wards more money so they can help their constituents, we'll also have more money to be able to support our social service agencies, as well as our, you know, as our museums right here in the city of Aurora. So Dan and Mike Alderman, the first, and Alderman of the sixth, I absolutely agree with you. And I can't wait until the casino gets completed and we start receiving that revenue, so we can not only help our wards, but also help our not-for-profit organizations as well as our casinos. But at this time, unfortunately, because of the decline, decline in gaming at the Hollywood Casino, we're just not in that position. Any questions or discussion on that? There being none?
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I agree with all.
I'm sorry, Alderman Masiacos.
Yeah, I agree with all three of you, but I think Alderman Barrero is also under the impression that we just, City Council increased property taxes 4.87% in December for this, for this tax.
Can't hear you, is your speaker on? Put it up to your mouth.
No, it's right there.
Can't hear you, though.
I said I agree, I think, I agree with all of you, my two colleagues, my two aldermanic colleagues and you, but I think Alderman Barrero is under the impression as well that we just raised taxes 4.87% past December for this tax year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? None? All right, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. This item is approved. Madam Clerk, read the next item under unfinished business.
25-0135, recommended changes to the alderman's office mileage reimbursement policy.
You know, hold on a second. You know, in the last item, I said that Alderman Bug had left the room temporarily is because he recused himself for this particular item. Just want to make that clear. He was never going to be involved in this particular item, so it's just based on his recusal. But now, the record reflect that Alderman Bug is back in city council chambers to participate in the additional items on this, on the agenda. Madam Clerk, continue. Read it again.
25-0135, recommended changes to the alderman's office mileage reimbursement policy.
So.
There's been a motion by Alderman Franco.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tolliver. Any questions or discussions on this item? There being no question, discussion? I'm sorry, Alderman Bug, did you have any question?
No.
No question, discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos.
Yes.
Alderman Donnell.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
12 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries. The recommendation is approved. Madam Clerk, read the next item.
25-0182, a resolution authorizing approval of a loan agreement between the city of Aurora and Jamie Gilmore and a third amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Urban Equity Properties for the purpose of facilitating the redevelopment of the vacant commercial space located at the ground level at 2 North Broadway in downtown Aurora.
There's been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Questions or discussion? Before we take any question, discussion, Mr. Debo, did you have a presentation?
We did the presentation last week. I just want to be available for questions. There were a couple of questions that came up, and I just thought we'd take a couple of minutes, but we had a pretty extensive discussion last week.
Table, why don't you address those questions that came up last week that may not have been addressed?
Let's, let's do that. I do have.
What were the questions?
I have two questions from Alderman Masiacos and I don't, Alderman Lash. Did we, we made some changes?
I resolved, yeah, I feel like we resolved everything, and there was one graphical change that, so.
To the, to the legislative agreement. So thank you so much for that feedback. And then Alderman Masiacos had two questions. One had to do with the, the wherewithal of the developers to pay back the two borrowers to pay back the loans, and I just want Chris Minnick to comment on that if I can.
Mr. Minnick.
Yes, Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer and City Treasurer. As Mr. Debo indicated, we did actually take a look at several bank records, bank statements for the last couple of months related to various depository accounts of the, of the two applicants for the, for the loans. We did also take a look at tax returns, as well as financial statements and statements of revenues and expenditures, and there, those did reflect a capability and a, an ability for both borrowers to pay back the loans to the city that are contemplated in the agreements this evening.
Thank you. Any other questions, Alderman Masiacos, on the two, any other comments on the questions that you had?
There was one other question that Alderman Masiacos raised regarding the budget. Were you able to take a look at that? If you refresh your iPads, we did include the budget, and I do have the developers, I think, on the phone, if there are any detailed questions you want as to how we derive the $900,000, and they actually had a bid in there as well.
Well, I appreciate giving me the opportunity to expand on that conversation. When you look at a project like this, you want to see a floor plan. Floor plan gives you a better idea of what you're doing. What you're doing, though, is another, you're taking a step, pre-step and just doing it per square foot. I've had the liberty of being in this building pre-aldermanic years as an architect, and I do have some, some knowledge about it, and considering we've been working on this project for a few years, the beginning of the incension of, of the terminal building. But the, the challenge is making sure that $900,000 is enough, based on what the tenant wants to do. Based on my experience, $900,000 is conservative, it's doable. My biggest concern is they want to come back for more money if the design expands, and without a floor plan, that's not possible. But I know it can be possible with a budget presented before us by UEP Urban Equity Partners. So I'm not against the project. I'm, I'm going to support this project, but it's going to be very tight for them, based on my estimations as an architect who does have experience with restaurants, that they get it done with this project, with this budget amount set before us tonight.
And I do have the developers on the phone if we need them, but, and I do appreciate those comments, if there is overruns, it is the responsibility of the developer.
Yes.
Yes.
It is a responsibility.
All right, let's make that clear, because I think what Alderman Masiacos said is very, a very important point, that, you know, based on experience as a, an architect, that it may cost more than nine hundred thousand to build out this and get it up to par.
No.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish. Hold on a second, hold on a second, Alderman Masiacos. Get it up to par to the level that the restaurateur wants it to be. So just so we're clear, if there is any amount over the nine hundred thousand, it's going to be borne, it's going to be the responsibility of the owner, Urban Equity is the owner of the property.
Correct, and that's why we asked them to become the general contractor as well as the owner as well, to make sure that they had the control.
Beautiful.
So they could do that as well.
Alderman Masiacos?
No, thank you very much.
Would you mind, Mayor, just only because you weren't here last week, I would like Jamie Gilmore to just introduce herself if I can.
Good to see you again, Ms. Gilmore.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Chef Gilmore. I've met a few of you at the financials, but just to give you an idea of who I am, I started out in 2019, and I've had a successful restaurant as well as a couple of other businesses as well. I currently have a business in the Fulton Market area that produces a little over three hundred thousand. It's a very small, it's a counter service, but what I'm looking to do here in Aurora is offer a family-friendly environment and also a space for event rentals as well, but not like outside events, more so of chef tables, more so things to promote the paramount attendees, and doing special dinners just for them to make them feel super special since they'll be in walking distance of the area. I'm looking forward to partnering in the area that I live. I live down the road, not too, too far, so it kind of bothers me to drive all the way to the city to help make the city great. I want to make the city where I live great. So if you have any questions for me, if there are anything concerns as far as the proposal, I'll be happy to answer any of those.
Any questions? Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just because you were on the phone last time, when I asked the question about the dollar per meal, you said something like thirty-five, but that includes drinks. I just, if you could clarify what you think the average dinner will be?
Absolutely. So the average meal will be fifteen to seventeen dollars, and if you were to add a cocktail, about thirty-five dollars per person.
That's the thirty-five, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So moved.
Alderman Lash?
Yeah, just a comment again. Thanks, Dave, for calling me back and helping iron out some of those deals. And overall, I think this is a better way to approve or approach economic development where we have an actual loan instead of a forgivable loan. So thank you for moving in that direction.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, Madam Clerk, there's been a motion, a second on the floor already, I believe. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The resolution is approved. Congratulations, ma'am. Look forward to your restaurant open very soon.
So much.
That concludes unfinished business. There, I'm sorry, there is the item that was taken off of consent. Madam Clerk, you read that item?
Twenty-five zero one eight eight, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement with the Kane County Health Department for an opioid overdose reversal agent vending machine at the Aurora Transit Center. So moved.
Been a motion made by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Any questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Burr?
Yes, so last week, Adam was not here, but I did, I did acknowledge his efforts and his persistence. He was here, you know, meeting after meeting, making sure that this need was heard, and he went the extra mile, met with, met with city officials, county officials, and just kept at it. So I just wanted to congratulate him for his hard work. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pauli, thank you very much for your tenacity. Thank you for moving this forward and staying on top of us so we could, we can do our part. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. The item is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Pauli. Congratulations, Kane County. And congratulations to Aurora. All right, there is no new business, and there are, for the council to consider, there are no reports for the council to consider. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills?
Oh, yes.
There's been a motion made by Alderman Seville, second by Alderman Lash. With the clerk, please call the roll for the bills.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Bills are paid up. We have someone from IT that is present that can look at Alderman Masiacos's microphone. It doesn't appear that it's working properly. It was very difficult to hear him from it, and I believe now it doesn't appear to be working at all. So before we have our next meeting, someone from IT, please repair Alderman Masiacos's microphone. And before we adjourn, I believe Alderman Smith has requested that she have a statement to make for the council. Alderman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did prepare a statement to read tonight because I'm so distraught over recent events that occurred online that I felt it was best to put it in writing so that I could say what I needed to say. It's unfortunate that in 2025, women are still being subject to misogynistic attacks simply for doing their job. Aurora resident Rick Lawrence, a man who I've never spoke to and only know him from public comics in this room, has recently launched a vile, baseless, personal attack against me, full of sexist indiendos, personal insults, and outright lies. Not only has he made public posts, that's with an S, degrading me, he also hides behind a blog that he runs using it as a platform to spread misinformation, bully, and harass women who disagree with him. Let me be very clear. I do not know Rick Lawrence. Yet, he has made it his mission to spread falsehoods about me, attack my character, threaten my livelihood. Resorting to name-calling, degrading comments about my personal life, and sexist tropes are not political discourse. This is harassment. This is cowardly bullying. This is defamation and completely unacceptable. I will not be intimidated or silenced by Mr. Lawrence's cowardly attempt to bully women through his vulgar indiendos. I was elected to serve the people of Aurora, not to engage in petty online battles to those who peddle hatred, lies, and smear campaigns. I welcome fact-based, respectful discussions on policy decisions, but what I will not tolerate is the continued harassment of women by bullies who hide behind keyboards. I am a mother. I am a sister. I am a daughter, and it disgusts me to think that one of my family members or any other woman in this community would, would be exposed to this sexual degrading comments made by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence, I ask you to think of the women in your own life. I ask you to follow the principles that are recently in Congress called the Take It Down Act put forth by our new First Lady, and I am asking you to remove those vulgar posts. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Motion adjourn? There's been a motion to adjourn by, who's that? Alderman Lash?
Second.
Second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.